Another public hearing for Unified Development Code Text Amendment. Another public hearing for Unified Development Code Text Amendment. A preliminary plat, other business, and then adjournment. So with that, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair.
I have a motion from Commissioner Fairbanks and a second from Commissioner Banks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. With some republic hearings tonight, I will run through the procedures for a public hearing real quick for those of you not familiar with it. I will open the public hearing. I will call on exhibits from the city attorney. Staff will make comments. The applicant will be given an opportunity to make a presentation. I will ask for witnesses in favor, then witnesses against. Open it up for general discussion among the commissioners, and then I will close the public hearing and we will consider it for a vote. So with that, first item on the -- or second item on the agenda, excuse me, is a public hearing for a conditional use permit, CUP-08-19-7030. I will open that public hearing and ask for exhibits from our attorney.
Mr. Chairperson, excuse me. City has eight exhibits to offer into the record at this time. Number one is the staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication and the examiner.
Bob, can you pull your mic down? There you go. Thank you.
I tried that. Where was I? Number two is the affidavit of publication and examiner on August 10th, 2019. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is the names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code ordinances by reference. Number eight is the 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference. Those are all of the exhibits I would offer into the record at this time.
All right. Thank you very much. And Mr. Chair is going to present this to us this evening.
Thank you Chairman Graham and Plenary Commission. Before you today is a request by the applicant, David Sosby with Blue Springs Auto Repair, on behalf of the property owner, Bill and Eileen Adams, trustees, requesting the approval of a conditional use permit to allow the use of the vehicle and repair limited as allowed in the use table. This property is located at 201 Northwest 11th Street. It's on the west side of Northwest 11th Street, about 425 feet south of Vesper. The property is about a quarter acre in size. It's one parcel, and it's zoned light industrial, or LI for short. The proposal is not changing the building itself. There are no changes to the existing building, only a change in use. Thus, as per the UDC, any change in use only has to bring the site into compliance, so that includes parking landscaping, stuff to the exterior, not the building itself. So, a couple of the items that the city has heard in the past on this property have been -- it's been a little while since this property has been -- has had any action taken by Plenary Commission or City Council. Originally, it was actually platted in 1878 as part of the Blue Springs original town plat, and a Porsche -- or the -- what was previously Oak Street was vacated. Oak Street now runs south of here, but previously what was labeled as Oak Street was vacated just to the south of this site in this area, along just the south of this building between Winter Meet and the property in question. Since then, there have been no actual applications heard by Plenary Commission or City Council, so this will be the first in a while. For a conditional use for vehicle repair limited, there are some use standards that apply to that use specifically. First and foremost, traffic study and other design items for the traffic purposes are not required in this case because those are only required for gas stations or automotive service stations, and Public Works standards also do not require traffic study for this proposed use in this situation. A couple of the other use standards applicable to vehicle repair limited only apply if the property is facing or adjacent to residential property, which it is neither. It's surrounded by LI mainly on all three sides, and then across the street. It does have a little bit of T-5 zoning, which is the downtown zoning district for The only use standard is the request by the UDC for the applicant to indicate what they are doing on the site in terms of the vehicle repair and other ancillary uses. So that applicant does intend to repair vehicles, also providing some car washing services to their customers at this location, and then also limited customer services such as coffee, water, and TV will be provided for the customers as well. So those are the use standards for this proposed use, and staff does believe that it does meet all of those. As far as the development or the site improvements, the development standards for this property, the parking does meet the required -- or the proposed parking does meet the required parking. So the proposed layout has 12 spaces. There are five existing in front of the street, or in front of the building, and then the applicant has found space for seven parallel spaces with a drive aisle in between. I'm going to the back. You can see the seven spaces along here, four there, and then three here with a drive aisle. I'm going to the back garage doors where the existing garages are. So they do meet the standard for parking for vehicle repair limited. There are some requirements or conditions of approval that staff does want to line out. Prior to business license approval, the striping for the required spaces must be in place. The long-term storage of vehicles on this property is not allowed per the UDC. There should not be any vehicle parked on the street except for a customer drop-off or pickup. Everything should be internal to the site on private property, and no vehicle should block the drive aisle, going back to the garages I pointed out earlier, just to provide access to those vehicle parking as well as for emergency vehicles if necessary. As far as landscaping, as the other site improvement requirements, the existing trees on the south side of the building, the applicant is proposing to keep the existing trees, clean up a little bit of the overgrowth, and also plant some new bushes and flowers along the street. Staff believes that if they at least retain six existing trees that are three inches or larger and plant 10 plant units, this should meet the intent of the code as well as the technical -- technicalities of the code to meet the actual plant unit requirements. Lastly, there is an existing pole sign on this property located in the southeast corner of the property, and as per the sign code, pole signs, whenever there is a change of use, we do require them to come down as they are not allowed in this area of the city. And if my memory serves me correctly, I think this might be the only one on 11th Street. So this pole sign should come down prior to business license approval. With that, staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit for the vehicle repair limited, subject to four conditions, and I'll stand for any questions.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Chair? Commissioner Fairbanks?
Yes, I'm curious. The car washes that are going to be completed, would those be only for the vehicles that have been repaired, or will it be open to the public?
I'll leave that for the applicant to answer.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Oh, sir. When you -- we'll let her -- we'll let you address her question when you make your presentation, if that's okay. Thank you.
That was my only question. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Commissioner Field.
Mr. Chair, can you -- or do you have knowledge that the building itself has the proper equipment for storage and disposal of fluids that may be collected?
I do not, but if those are required, prior -- I know Public Works is pretty particular about what you put in the sewer system, so we will require that before they can -- Public Works will require that before they get a business license at this location.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chair. You're welcome. Any other questions for Mr. Chair? All right. Thank you. Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward? You'll need to state your name. Yeah, up to the podium. State your name and be sworn in, please.
Do you sound swear to tell the truth, and not the public truth, so help me God? I do. James David Sosby.
Could we get an address, too, please?
3822 Denton Road, Kansas City, Missouri, 64133.
Great. Thank you.
My question was, if you're going to be doing auto repair, are you only going to wash those cars, or is your car wash open to the public?
It's going to be mainly for the cars we're doing, but if someone would like to get their car cleaned up a little bit, we would probably take that in. We are going for a little bit bigger space, and it will probably help us, you know, down the road, but it won't be the main subject, no. So I can't say we might do one or two, but mostly for what we work on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Did you have any other comments?
Oh, I'd just like to say I've been right down the street at 313 Northwest 11th for seven years, and Blue Springs has treated us really well, and we'd love to stay out here and grow and meet more people. Appreciate it.
Anybody have any other questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor? Anybody that would like to speak in opposition? Any other discussion among the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Phillips.
I'll just make a quick comment. Thank you for staying downtown and staying with us here in Blue Springs, and we're glad you're still here.
And my comment on record would be the same thing, so I would be glad that they're staying in Blue Springs and downtown.
All right. Can you come back up to the podium, please?
One thing I did mention, I do have some letters of recommendations from like 11 of the businesses around me that really appreciate me being down there as far as like fleet accounts, real close, they can drop them off and walk back. Charlie's Body Shop, we do a lot of service with them, being right down the same street. It just makes it so much easier for them, and that's why we'd like to stay there, too, also, with a lot of great customers.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Phillips.
I would move for approval of conditional use permit, CUP-08-19-7030, with the four staff conditions.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second from Commissioner Banks. This will be a roll call vote.
Plenary Commissioner Cradoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Casey.
Aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Aye.
Commissioner Field.
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Stokkenberry.
Aye.
Commissioner Hose.
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks.
Aye.
Chairman Graham. Aye. Motion carries, so it's approved with our recommendation here, or with us. We are the final say on that, so thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Three will be a public hearing for a conditional use permit, We will hear item number six as well, which is the preliminary plat for that, so I am going to open the public hearing and call for exhibits from our city attorney.
Mr. Chairperson, I have eight exhibits. Number one is the staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication and examiner on August 10th, 2019. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code ordinances by reference. Number eight is the 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference. Those are all of the exhibits that the city would offer into the record at this time. Mr. Chairperson.
All right. Thank you very much. And Mr. Wright is going to present this evening on this.
Thank you Chairman Graham and Commissioners. Before you this evening are two requests related to the proposed seven two-family building development project known as South -- or as McAtee Meadows. This project is located at the northwest corner of Southwest South Avenue and Southwest 7th Street Terrace, which is just a block to the west of the intersection of Southwest 7th Highway and South Avenue. Does cover approximately .92 acres, and the property is zone T3, which is part of the suburban zoning district in the Downtown Development Code. The Downtown Development Code does permit two-family buildings with a conditional use permit in the T3 zoning district, which is why it is before the commission this evening. The applicant has provided a preliminary site plan and building elevations for this project, which will include a mix of paired homes and flat-over-flat duplexes. Buildings will front Southwest 7th Street Terrace with parking access off of South Avenue, shared parking lot in the back of all of the units. Building setbacks, design standards, parking, and landscaping will all be reviewed by the Downtown Review Board prior to building permit. However, the applicant has provided some conceptual drawings this evening showing two different building types, both two stories with front porches and balconies. The purpose of the CUP, again, is to allow the development of seven two-family buildings on the property. Other items will be reviewed by the Downtown Review Board at a later date. The second request is for a preliminary plat for the development, which would include seven two-family lots and then one tract that will be for shared parking and a drainage easement. The minimum lot frontages have been met for all lots. Minimum is 25 feet. All lots are 30 feet in width. Access, again, will be provided from Southwest South Avenue with a shared drive for all parking for the units. The access drive and parking lot will need to be dedicated as an access and parking easement to ensure permanent access and parking to all lots within the development. Five-foot sidewalk will be required along Southwest South Avenue, and then a four-foot sidewalk will also be provided along the frontage of the seven lots to provide pedestrian access from all units to the Southwest South Avenue sidewalk. Stormwater will be provided at the northwest corner of the property and will be required to be installed prior to approval of the final plat. The Downtown Review Board did review the conditional use permit request on August 12th and unanimously recommended approval of the conditional use permit. Staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit with two conditions, and the preliminary plat with five conditions, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wright? All right. Doesn't look like there is. Would the applicant like to come up? You'll both need to be sworn in, and then I'll have you both state your name and address for the record.
Do you sound swear to tell the truth, and not the public truth, so help me God?
I do. Good evening. I'm Jed Baughman with Powell CWM. We prepared the site plan, elevation drawings, preliminary plat, and applications for these two requests. City staff has been extremely helpful in helping us move this forward through the CUP process and the preliminary plat process, and we ask that you approve our request to move these forward to City Council.
All right.
Can we get your address, please?
3200 South State Route 291, Building 1 in Independence, Missouri.
Any questions for the applicant?
I do.
Yes, Commissioner Banks.
Well, it may -- we probably want to probably hear this during the site plan, I mean, preliminary plat, but I'm going to go ahead and ask, are these going to be rented, or are they going to be sold individually?
To be determined.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry. Could you state your name? Address for the record? Chad McAtee.
You'll need to be sworn in.
He was.
Oh, Lord, I wasn't paying attention.
It's okay. Chad McAtee, 3224 South Owen School Road, Independence, Missouri, 64057.
Okay.
I'm the developer.
Okay. And what did you say?
To be determined.
Oh.
Yes, so it hasn't been set in place yet.
The only reason I ask is because it's going to have a recorded driveway easement, so if he sold it, it'd be have to be recorded, and we don't have anything down that's going to be recorded. It just says that we have to have an easement.
Well, it would be recorded on the final plat.
Okay.
So he wouldn't be able to sell any of these lots until the final plat has been recorded.
It just wasn't -- the word wasn't in there, so I want to make sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Fairbanks?
I don't understand how if you're going to sell it. If you sell Lot 3, how you're going to sell the parking area for Lot 3? That's one question. The second question is, I drove by the property today, I'm already here, and I also drove down Jones Street, and there is parking in the front of Jones Street. No cars were parked in the driveway in the back. No cars were parked in the garages that I could tell, but there was only one drivable lane because of the parking in front. Is there any way to prohibit front parking along that area on 7th Street Terrace?
I'm not sure that we could do that as a developer. Isn't that more of a public safety?
That would be through Public Works Engineering on not allowing parking along that side of the street. In terms of the parking, the parking is on track day, so the parking is reserved by the recorded plat, that you have parking off-site.
We would dedicate a parking and cross-access easement on the plat, which would cover all of that regardless of a lot gets sold or rented. Whoever buys that lot buys access.
So if the hard surface deteriorates and needs to be replaced, how's that going to work?
I would say typically you do that through -- cover that through a covenant.
Yeah. There would be -- it would be required to have some kind of a property management or homeowners association to.
An HOA association for those seven units?
Yes.
And so is that something that needs to be stated?
It doesn't need to be stated with the preliminary plat. It will need to be stated on the final plat.
Okay.
So that -- all that language will get worked out as part of the final plat.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, thank you. Unless you have other comments?
Thank you.
All right. I will ask for anyone that would like to speak in favor of the conditional use permit. Anybody that would like to speak in opposition? Yes, sir. You'll have to come up, be sworn in, state your name and your address.
My name is.
You need to be sworn in first.
I do.
And if you could state your name and address, please.
My name's Nick Gannadin. I live at 803 Southwest South Avenue. I'm the property that runs right next to it. I don't really have opposition, more questions. I don't know if this is the place to have those answered or not.
You can ask it, and we can see.
Well, currently where that parking line runs, there's a lot of trees, and that's the, you know, the property line, so I'm curious, are they going to take out all those trees?
You'll need to direct your questions to me, please.
Take out all those trees, and then what are they going to do? Put a fence up there? Because I don't want to see a parking lot, because out to the side I have a side porch, and I just don't want to look at a parking lot when I go out to my side porch, basically.
Okay.
So I'm just trying to get answers on, like, what's the plan for this, you know, the amount of.
Landscape.
Yeah. Because that whole line is trees, and it puts a nice shade on my house. If they're going to cut them down, I don't want -- I don't want them to mess up and put a tree through my house. I don't want any of that kind of stuff, so I'm just trying to get answers on, like, what the plan is for that.
Okay. Is that something that applicant can come back up and answer, or is that something you?
They're welcome to answer it. In terms of buffering, there is not a landscape buffering requirement.
Okay.
There is a -- along the street frontage, they do have to provide some hedges or something to screen the parking from the street, but there's no buffering requirement from property to property.
Okay. Would the applicant like to address his concern? Was that the only question you had?
Yeah, primarily. That's one of my main concerns with the construction of this, so.
Okay.
Sir, can you please spell your last name for me?
It's G-A-N-A-D-E-N.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
I personally would prefer that the trees remain for a couple of reasons. One, obviously the buffer that I think would be beneficial for everybody, people living in the units as well as surrounding people. So that would be my intention. I don't know from a code standpoint whether we've gotten that far down the road or anything, but, I mean, that's where I stand on it.
Okay. Thank you. Does that answer your question, sir?
It does, so is there going to be a fence line put up?
If you got -- you're going to have to come up and address to me, and I can -- so it's on the record since we're in a public hearing.
And I was just curious if they had any plans to put a fence line up, or if it would just leave the tree line how it was.
Sounds like he's just going to do the tree line and try to maintain that, not necessarily a fence.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else would like to speak in opposition? All right. Seeing none, I will bring it back here for discussion among the commissioners. If there's any discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Field.
I'd like to ask staff if there were any letters of opposition return or dissent.
No letters of opposition, but there was a -- one return letter from a Wendell -- Wendell Ryan Boldt, just no address, returned to sender.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, staff. Thank you, Chair. You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Phillips.
Again, as my -- in my role as downtown spokesman and as a member of the Downtown Review Board, I would like to say that, again, we're glad to have you downtown and look forward to increasing the population density of the downtown area with this project, so.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll vote on the conditional use permit first if I get a motion, and then we'll consider the preliminary plat afterwards. So I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Phillips.
I seem to be on a roll today.
Well, just keep going.
I would move for approval of the conditional use permit, CUP-08-19-7031 for McAtee Meadows, with the two staff conditions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Banks. This will be a roll call vote.
Plenary Commissioner Casey.
Aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Aye.
Commissioner Field.
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Stokkenberry.
Aye.
Commissioner Hose.
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks.
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Aye.
Chairman Graham.
Aye.
So that passes? Next item, it was -- first, item six was further down on the list, but I'm going to go ahead and we'll vote on that as well unless anybody has any objections. I would entertain a motion on that one as well.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Banks.
I'm going to mess you up now. I would like to make a motion to approve the preliminary plat, PP-08-19-7032, McAtee Meadows, with the five staff conditions. Meadows, with the five staff conditions.
I have a motion, how about a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Phillips. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes as well.
Can we have questions?
Not after we voted on it.
No.
We can save it for the final plat when it comes through.
Yes.
Not now.
Can we have some questions?
So that brings us to our next public hearing, which will be on the Unified Development Code text amendment, UDC-T-08-19-7028. I will open the public hearing and ask for exhibits from our attorney.
Mr. Chairperson, the city has five exhibits. Number one is the staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication and the examiner on August 10, 2019.
You're so soft-spoken.
Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is Title Four Land Use Section Blue Springs Code ordinance by reference. Number five is the 2014 comprehensive plan, also by reference. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into record at this time.
All right, thank you very much. And Mr. Mallon is going to present this to us this evening.
Thank you. This is a Unified Development Code text amendment related to the medical marijuana regulations that the city has adopted. This is only in relation to some very specific amendments that the staff feels are necessary in order to comply with the state's Department of Health and Senior Services emergency rules that were published on July 1, 2019. The City Council adopted ordinance 4839 on July 15. The intent of that ordinance was to mirror the state's language. However, the ordinance that was brought forward by staff failed to include some pretty crucial language as part of that, and staff recognized that error and is bringing forward this amendment now to help clarify that. So specifically, what this amendment does is clarify the measurement methods and separation distances for medical marijuana facilities. It would be an amendment to Sections 405, 050A, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, and 39, related to the different medical marijuana facility uses that we have in our development code. And the amendment specifically relates to, hold on one second, how the separation distances are measured. If you recall, there's a minimum 1,000-foot separation between medical marijuana facilities and churches, schools, and daycares. With the exception of a testing facility, it's a 300-foot. The final state rules actually included additional language that was not captured in the ordinance that I previously mentioned. And it has to relate, and it relates to when a medical marijuana, or when a church, school, or daycare is actually part of a strip mall, or an office park, or an office building. And so in those instances, you measure from the entrance of the church, school, or daycare to the medical marijuana facility. So it's just adding this line under, within each of those sections, 34 through 39. If the school, daycare, or church is part of a larger structure such as an office building or strip mall, the distance shall be measured to the entrance or exit of the school, daycare, or church closest in proximity to the facility. So we'd be adding that under those instances when the medical marijuana facility is a freestanding facility, and also when a medical marijuana facility is part of a larger structure such as a strip mall. So that would be under those six sections. Also, the state included a pretty crucial word, it doesn't sound like it, but under the measurement method, it says, "Measurements shall be made along the shorter path between the demarcation points that can be lawfully traveled by foot." And that was specifically included to prevent people from trespassing or cutting across private property. And so staff feels that that's also a critical component that we need to update our ordinance. So these ordinance, these are the only sections of the code that are being proposed to be amended related to medical marijuana. And the language that is being proposed is the exact same as in the state's emergency rules published on July 1. That is, well, let's see, the Development Advisory Commission reviews these proposed amendments on August 19 and unanimously voted to recommend approval to this board. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Mallon? All right. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor? Anybody that would like to speak in opposition? Any other comments, questions, concerns among the Commissioners on the record? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Casey?
I move that UDC text amendment 0819-7028 be approved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Peel? This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokkenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Hose?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Chairman Graham?
Aye. So that will be sent to the City Council for their September 4 meeting at 6:00 with our recommendation of approval, for approval. All right. Brings us to Item Number Five, public hearing for the Unified Development Code text amendment, UDCT-08-19-7029. I will open the public hearing and call for exhibits from our city attorney.
Mr. Chairperson, the city has five exhibits. Number one is the staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication and the examiner on August 10, 2019. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is Title Four Land Use Section Blue Springs Code ordinances by reference. Number five is the 2014 comprehensive plan by reference. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into record at this time.
All right, thank you very much. And Mr. Mallon, you're going to present this one as well.
Yes, thank you again. This is a Unified Development Code text amendment to the Downtown Development Code, Section 404-240 of the Unified Development Code, which regulates the development of property and construction of certain structures in the downtown zoning district. It also outlines the process for applicants to follow for project review within the downtown zoning district. This specific amendment we're talking about tonight would add an appeals process for the Downtown Review Board decisions in which, in instances in which the Downtown Review Board is acting as the final decision-making body. Currently, there is no appeals process in the code for those instances, and staff believes that it's prudent to have an appeals process so that, similar to all of our other boards and commissions in which there is a final decision-making body, those decisions are appealable to a subsequent body such as, final decisions made by the planning commission can be appealed to the City Council. Decisions of the Board of Adjustment for variance or other items such as that can be appealed to Circuit Court, but seeing that there is no appeals process for a Downtown Review Board decision, staff is bringing this amendment forward. So what this language would read is, under, would be an amendment to 404-240M1A, and we'd be adding a number five to say that the City Council shall serve as the appellate body for the Downtown Review Board, and appeal of a Downtown Review Board decision shall follow the same appeals process outlined in Section 403-010A3F. The Downtown Review Board voted unanimously on August 12 of this year to recommend approval of this proposed amendment, and the Development Advisory Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval on August 19 for this proposed amendment. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Mallon? Yes, Commissioner Casey?
Mr. Mallon, would this, this new section be in effect for any previous decisions, or would this just be going forward?
This would just be going forward. It would not be retroactively applied.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Anybody that would like to speak in opposition, or in favor, I mean, of the proposal? Anybody that would like to speak in opposition? Any other discussion up here? Yes, Commissioner Phillips?
I would like to comment on Mr. Casey's question, because we asked this at the Downtown Review Board when we were taking the vote on this. This is a proactive measure. This is not reactive to someone being upset with a board decision already. So there isn't something out there in the past that somebody is looking to appeal, so just want to let you know that.
Good to know. Thank you.
And if I could make a comment about it?
Yes, Commissioner Banks?
I was on the Downtown Review, and we didn't have anybody upset, but I think this is a really good thing that we should have it. So whoever came up with the idea, commend the board, because I, this, everybody should have that right, so.
All right. Any other comments on the record? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I would entertain a motion. Anyone?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Peel?
I move that the Unified Development Code text amendment, UDCT-08-19-7029, which is for downtown development appeal process for the decisions of the Downtown Review Board, be passed as submitted by staff.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Banks. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokkenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Hose?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Chairman Graham?
Aye. That passes, and we will send that recommendation to City Council for their September 4 meeting at 6:00 as well.
And that's a Wednesday.
And that is a Wednesday because of Labor Day.
Yes.
All right. That brings us to other business.
Mr. Mallon? Thank you. The next scheduled meeting for the Planning Commission is Monday, September 9, 2019. We do not have any items to bring forward that evening. We didn't have any applications for the cutoff date, so we do not have anything to bring forward in terms of land use cases or Unified Development Code text amendments or anything like that. So I would always offer the ability for the Planning Commission to have a study session if they would like on a topic that you deem appropriate, or there is also the option of canceling that meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Phillips, would you like to make a motion in regard to this?
I think I'll try and jump in front of everyone here. That's the week before my birthday, and I just don't want to meet.
You want a study session, right?
I don't want to meet. So I'm going to move that we do not hold a meeting on September 9.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Looks like we voted down a study session, Mr. Mallon.
We are always here ready for when you want one. Just let us know.
Any other business?
Could we just look at the map of the preliminary plat, Plat Magatee Meadows, and see where the sidewalks are?
It's blocked.
It would probably be under Item Six, I think.
Oh, you're, you want to look at the site plan?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Disunderstood. I thought you were looking at the aerial photograph.
I'm going to see the sidewalks. Where's the sidewalk here in front?
The four-foot public sidewalk would be located along Southwest Seventh Terrace. Is that correct, Matt?
Yeah, there would be a five-foot sidewalk along South Avenue and then a four-foot sidewalk along Seventh Terrace.
And then is there a sidewalk here before the parking areas? So that there's sidewalks U shape around three of this property edges?
That is up to the applicant if they would like to provide that. That is not required by code. The only sidewalks that are required by code in the Downtown Development Code is what's out in the street and then the connection to the front entrances. But any additional sidewalk would be up to the applicant.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.